Congratulations to the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, one liberty, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That would be my call. He's on air. So the top is here. But what about the present? There's Johnson here. Bill Hodge.
Present.
Mike Netwood.
Present.
We're putting on the agenda. Maybe a few.
Second.
On paper, so I.
Bye.
Full service charge. In front. And we can jump in if you question Erica.
Yes. I apologize that my son with me.
Oh, fine.
For work parents. So I had a little bit of an incident where our water meter broke. Uh, it was broken at the meter. Water coming out of the meter. Before that happened, we've been running a freeze run. At our residence, it's actually a rental property while we remodel our home. Uh, it's located in South Gate. And. I do believe it's more so because of a refurbished meter rather than negligence. Because we were running the freeze run. We have steel sided skirting around the trailer. We have heat tape. And we also will run a space heater if we have to. And in the ten years that my husband has owned that rental property. There's been. A lot of tenants who did not. Take care of, you know, a freeze run, all that stuff, the pipes have frozen. Repeatedly prior to us residing in that property without this happening. And then this happened while we were preventing, doing everything to prevent it. So February sixteenth, I saw there was water behind our trailer. And, uh, the water was coming out of the meter. Service, uh, the city serviceman came out, replaced it. And then he had to come out again the next day and give us another meter. Cause he said it was a refurbished one and the one that he had put. In replacement was also not reading now the water. So there's now a brand new one. Not refurbished one. And we haven't had any issues since then. And so she was charged for the meter. So I think that's what you're here to dispute. She, yeah. She is not disputing the hundred twenty-five dollar emergency, but she's disputing the three twenty-nine sixty-nine for the cost of the meter. Um, which. Due to negligence, um, the freezing is. In our ordinance is that we bill them for the meter. And so she's disputing that. That's the dispute. Cause we, our pipes did not. Freeze. We were running the freeze run. We have running water. So I don't know if it was because we were running the freeze run and have water constantly going. There was an issue with the meter, but right at the meter. Water was coming out of the. Like the head of the meter there.
Yeah, I don't understand how a meter could freeze if the water lines didn't freeze. I mean, if water's going through it. Or.
And did you say when it was, uh, when you had the tenants living there that meter never froze and broke before that?
Yeah, there was. A situation prior where my husband and my father-in-law were going there to serve an eviction notice. People had vacated the property and. Water. The pipes froze and water was flooding out of the trailer. And even then the meter didn't break. But this time we haven't had, we've been doing everything. I mean. We're trying to make sure we take care of it so we can. It'll be rental ready when we move out and it's still. Was pretty faulty. I don't. And I, for me as well, it's the fact that the next day, the, the guy who came to change it had mentioned there was a refurbished meter that he had installed. And then had to reinstall. So I don't know if the one that was on there was refurbished. But I. We do everything we can to prevent.
Well, I mean, uh, if they, if they put a refurbished meter on there and it didn't work. Okay, that, that's on us, right? And. Um. So they. Uh, from what I understand is they put the referred meter on, they came out to next, the next day to see if it, um. If you see if it was working. And it wasn't. So they replaced it. Uh, that's on us. Uh, and. What I think we're, we're saying is. Based on what our tech saw. Is the only way that that meter could have broke the way it did is if it was frozen and that. That's how it broke, which led to the refurbished meter, which then we're not. Gonna charge you for the refurbished meter if we're just gonna replace it with a new one, right? We're just, we're, we're, we're charging you just to. Fix the problem and. I mean, that's, that's what happened.
And there was a thing above the heat tape was supposed to be attached in a certain manner.
Yes.
Well, what our, our policy is. Up to the curb stop, correct?
Yes, everything after the curb stop. That. It's no longer the city's responsibility.
Is there a chance I could get a copy of a report from your technician?
Certainly.
Cause there. Was a point. It was my stepdad and my husband who had disassembled and had the meter prepared the night of. On the sixteenth. Um, and he didn't want to go under the trailer at that point, but then the next day. I don't know if it was someone different. I was at work the next day. So that is also kind of a concerning. Part that, again, the service fee was. That was part of the service fee dispute that my. Stepdad, he's an electrician and has some plumbing experience. So he came over and helped my husband properly.
So our tech came out there the night of the sixteenth?
Yep. And then an additional tech came out the seventeenth.
Well, I mean, I, if, if it's all right, I can, I can read his statement if you'd like. That, yeah. Uh. Upon arrival on the sixteenth of February at said location, I noticed that the skirting had already been removed for easy access to the water meter. The water meter had previously frozen. The winter, spring before, and the entrance for the skirting was on the far east side of the home. So. Seeing that it made a new entrance was a good thing. I explained to the homeowner that he would need to redo his heat tape and insulation so that it would not happen again. He didn't. As I'm sure life got in the way. I immediately noticed that the meter had been removed and the reader was cockeyed from being blown off. The, the reader was cockeyed from being blown off. From the meter. Freeze breaking from the top, which is a rare situation as these are designed to freeze and break from the underbelly of the meter body. I returned to the city shop to grab a rebuilt meter and, okay, so grab the refurbished one. Um. On the morning of February nineteenth, I took a handheld reader in which we use to read how much water. A meter has ran through to see if the meter. Reader at, um, your address was working correctly. It was not. I then contacted the homeowner by phone and informed him that I would need to replace the rebuilt meter. And reader, as they were not working correctly, he said that was okay. I grabbed a brand new reader to install. I removed the old one and installed the new one. Right around one P M. As his child was having a nap. Uh, upon install, I made sure the heat tape was tight against the body of the meter and could feel that the heat tape was indeed working. So I, I mean.
So it's a, the previous spring it had broke, is that what it is though? To begin?
Yeah, uh. Uh, the water meter had previously frozen the winter, spring before, and the entrance for the skirting was on the far east side of the home.
Yep, and with recommendations, my husband made some. Changes so that easier access and put heat tape. Up to where it was. He was previously shown it was the best spot that it needed to be on. Um. So. That's everything I have. I don't. I'm open to also hearing what else we should probably do to improve that, cause. When we move out, we would.
I, I would think that the heat tape. Wrapped around it should take care of it. And then we freeze run, we have free notices when the water gets down to a certain temperature.
Yeah.
And then of course continue the, the freeze run even with the heat tape on it. That's your advice.
Yeah.
And if your Texas from the. Stop in, you know, and up to the stop in.
Okay, so it was from the previous.
Previous spring.
Here the, sounds like there was damages and we haven't been in there since we moved in in late October. So. Uh, again, that's on previous tenants, but that is, um. Life of owning rental property sometimes as well, but. Is this, I know we. Myself and my husband have done everything we can this season to prevent it.
We did have a couple of really cold snaps Monday then.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it didn't, we didn't. Obviously we have to, to make sure our water's running because we're, we have a little one, but. It, we didn't have any issues because we do run it, like I said, and it wasn't. Frozen the time that this occurred, so.
So you started water running inside when it was coming out of the meter underneath the trailer?
I just wonder when it froze the previous year, if there was some internal damage that didn't show itself. Until the second time it froze, it might have weakened something. Maybe the casting that weakened and then the second time it froze it. Because he said it froze somewhere where it normally shouldn't. It's designed to burst, you know? So do you think there might have been some? Superficial cracking or something from the first time it froze and then the second time it was not to? I, I'm not saying we're liable for that, but I'm just curious why it froze and was workable and then froze again and then casting.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
So what do you, what do you, what's the remedy? What, what remedy are you looking for?
Well, I don't want to pay for the meter, but. Obviously if we have to, we will. And again, moving forward. I, we haven't had any issues. We have the new meter, obviously, and. It's more so probably a learning experience than anything, cause we. Like I said, we have the heat tape. We've got steel sided skirting on it. My husband goes under there and cleans. Every spring, cause, uh, our neighbor has a lot of, there's a lot of felines in the neighborhood and. They go where it's warm, which is under our trailer. So. Just. I, I truly believe it wasn't due to us. Which is why I'm here today and I. Appreciate you guys' time and whatever you decide, either we'll. Have to pay and it's a learning experience or we'll go from there.
All right.
The, the follow-up on that is we. Will let her know. This one, right? What, what?
Would you make a decision now if you guys want to?
Is that? Yeah, what is the first, uh, look now or we discuss?
I mean, we don't react right away, but we can. It's up to the mayor. If you think we need to act on it now, it's fine.
Would you rather have time to digest? Our report?
I did read that report, but I guess.
Should we get some more information?
I'm just curious if it froze once and it was still working after it froze once and it froze again when it blew out.
So let's hold off, put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
That would be the best thing, yeah. Get a little more, we can get a little more detailed information.
In light of that, so you, right now you have a third bill for the meter.
I've already paid the water fees and stuff. We've worked together to make sure there's not like a disconnect notice or anything.
So you're good standing, everything. So based on what we decide, it's not like you're gonna be held hostage.
We will have water.
She won't get a late feed on the meter part?
No.
We'll send that on the agenda for the next meeting. Or deciding well.
It's up to them.
Uh, is there any specific info the council's looking for?
Um, I would. Be curious like Dylan said, it says that that one froze the year before, but did it get replaced? Or is that the meter that froze and was still under there? I don't have a answer to that question. And I'm sure they should have record of that. So.
Absolutely.
A little more information on that.
And then the, the follow-up, just curious, uh, when we're done at. With our portion of this. Uh, Erica will be contacted by. You or you or?
One of us.
One, oh, yeah. So you can look at Erica to be.
Sorry, Bob.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just making sure. I wanted you to leave here knowing kind of what the next, what you can expect from us, council.
Yeah, and if you're.
On the bus, we'll contact you to let us, let you know.
Yeah, it'll be myself or, uh, Diane. We'll reach out to you and, and let you know what's going on next.
You must have been, cause you know the contact that was kind of roped in between us, for as well. Yeah, I would see the nada.
That, that's me.
Awesome, yeah.
And that, that next meeting is on the twelfth of May, so we have to that.
Perfect. Well, I appreciate you guys, uh, taking your time to listen and. Your patience as well.
So that's a young date you have with.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, he's, um. He's quite the catch.
Well, thanks for, thanks for feeling comfortable to present this the way we did.
I really enjoy a little community.
Yeah.
Coming in.
Yeah, we are proud members, born and raised, so. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, no. You say.
It's up to agenda. Your council meeting minutes from March tenth and then March thirty-first, special work session. There was a couple of corrections in here, believe.
I've got several. This software. Is not totally. Born to not make mistakes apparently. What I had was on, on the tenth of March, on page three. Under the lifeguard description advertisement. Says that Jody suggests contacting me quite like Saturday means I made that suggestion then. On page. Four. Third paragraph down, it says council member Bill Hodge inquired about. The elevated lifecars and bullhorns. That was me. Uh. On page four, under the PLM lake edition. It said that the proposal would cover two hundred feet of shoreline at a cost of. One thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, which S L A offered to split fifty-fifty. Well, actually the cost would have been twenty-seven fifty, right?
I capped that one. Twenty-five seventy.
Twenty-five seventy.
I got that one.
Easy point. Uh, I wasn't sure on the motion at the top of page five. Where it said to authorize the city partner with S L A to treat two hundred more feet for weeds. Was, was there a treatment that was gonna happen and this was two hundred additional feet?
Yeah, there was beach.
I wasn't quite sure about that.
And this would be an additional two hundred.
So it was additional two hundred.
Also, there was corrections twelve eighty-five to the city.
Yeah, twelve eighty-five for the city on the motion was, was correct.
Sixty, now the motion carried five to one, should be four to one.
Yes.
Bother me.
Oh. I didn't vote against that. I voted in favor of it. I'm the one that brought it up to the V F W.
Yeah, that should be a five oh.
Yeah, that's a five oh.
Five oh.
Yes.
You brought it up to the menopause that Mike brought to that.
Yeah, yeah, I voted up to be a, to get the money and then oppose except. Uh. And the. Page seven, the bottom motion there. Uh, above the roof, it said to approve option A for full roof replacement for forty-five thousand. I think instead of saying option A, it should state the contractor's name.
And.
But it was option A.
I know it was option A, but I'm. Looking back in the future. You're gonna read this in option A, you're gonna say, what the heck is option A?
Wow.
Instead of Herzog roofing.
Did you just wanna add the option A with Herzog?
I, I just, I just, I just put Herzog in there in parentheses, so.
Then, um. Thirty-first minutes. I was confused when we looking at the liquor store manager. Cause it says that Heather was absent. But then when I read the monthly report, the second sentence, it says she mentioned that March burger sales were down by nine hundred. Well, I didn't know that number one. That the liquor store sold burgers. And number two, if she is absent, how can she mention anything?
Yeah, no, what page is that, Mike?
That's on page two.
Two.
Under the liquor store monthly reports, second sentence of that. Monthly report.
She wasn't, she wasn't here.
Oh, so how can she have mentioned?
We read her, we read.
Yeah, we read her report.
Well, she mentioned implies that she was present.
You wanted to say something like per, per her report.
Something of that nature.
Yeah, there was a, 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 let me, uh, I'll get clarification.
And then, uh, March burger sales were down by nine hundred. Was it liquor store about themselves?
March, March total sale.
Yeah, yeah, March, yeah, yeah.
Actually, she was here for this meeting. She was not absent.
Yeah, no, this was, yeah, she was here at the works.
Well, then she should not be marked as absent.
I remember talking about the T H C sales.
Yeah, yeah.
Wonder if the other is wrong. And so absent would be incorrect. And then the burger sales, I don't know what.
Total, it's, yeah, total sales. Oh. The works in total, yeah.
Then on page five. At the bottom there, point six, under the higher clink, higher click renewal. That motion. About the continuance of the membership also contained. That the city was to discuss sharing subscription with Greenwood Connection. That's not part of the motion that was.
Well, if it, if it wasn't part of the motion, then it, it, it doesn't go on there. That was out either before or after the fact.
Well, then it wasn't part of the discussion. I mean, it's not mentioned. This is my point.
Oh, oh, okay.
And that was part of the discussion and you were instructed to. Fuck with Laura from Greenwood Connection. And there's no mention of that.
Which you had.
Yes, yeah, with an updated email.
Yeah. And that's all, that's all I had on the minutes.
Were. Motion to accept. Except agenda as amended.
So moved.
So.
Second.
Well, but.
All right.
Same song, thank you.
Uh, did I have to, uh, call for the, uh? Motion seconded? I made the motion.
Okay, yeah, and we all stack it.
Thank you.
I don't know about hearings. There's no permission minutes, so it leaves.
Nope.
This is authentic new business, bro.
Uh, yes, gentlemen, uh, Clerks Institute, five to nine, May, uh, taking place in Brooklyn Center. Um. I for sure would like to attend that. Um, it, it does say in there, um. Um. You know. Clerks and finance officers. Uh. Since Kelly is still new here, um, this probably isn't the best setting for her.
They recommend nine to twelve months of employment.
Correct. Um, now, with that being the case, um, you know, there's the option for Diane to attend as well. Now, the, the, one of the, the issues here that obviously is gonna go down here, possible budget, budget meeting, uh, date change as well, and you can probably. Put that in here as, uh, May ninth is a Friday. That's the last day of the institute and you need to be there the, the whole time.
Well.
Yes.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Uh, the ninth is the budget meeting for nine in the morning and, uh, ninth is the last day of the Clerks Institute. So I, I won't be able to be.
All, all for our budget meeting.
Correct.
So we're gonna have to look at bumping out our budget or changing our budget.
Yeah.
When I, when I looked at this, I have, you know, I'm, I'm a big supporter of, of education. But as I read what they are proposing, then they talk about municipal clerks and municipal functional clerk. I just wondered you to tell me, how is Diane gonna benefit from this education with what she does?
I think that, uh, because we're a small city and we try to cross train as much as possible. I, I think just having the exposure. Uh, learning how everyone functions right, i- it really helps to have a good conversation when we're trying to solve problems. Whether that go anywhere from, uh, assessments to, uh. Yeah, how, how do we want to, uh, write this R F P, for example, um. It's, it's good to, for everyone to know each other's jobs and that would be the reason.
I, I agree with that to a point, but as I read the. Job description for the administrative clerk. The. Stuff that's in. This course is more for court clerks, like the deputy clerk and yourself. Not the admin clerk. Like the job description, I understand the cross training. I think when we're dealing with the taxpayers' dollars. I wanna make sure that the training dollars, I wanna spend training dollars, but I wanna make sure we're spending it on. People that it's gonna benefit the most and it's gonna come back to the city. It was just. The best way. Uh, I, I just don't think that the admin clerk fits into this. Basically, it's. You go to this three times and you get a clerk's certificate. You know. And I don't see where the admin clerk fits that position. I think myself that even though Kelly is. Fairly new at this. She needs to get out there and get these connections and, and get the training. I would. She's a smart pick. I mean, my suggestion would be to send her if she's available. I'd, I'd like to see her get this training even though she's fairly new at it.
We'd like to hold off till next year for her.
It's a long time. I mean, that, my thought is we don't get her. Into some of this training, is it going to?
And that's what they say that, they, they recommend. First year participants have completed at least nine to twelve months of employment in a municipal setting prior to attending. In order to receive a full understanding of the information provided. So I'd rather conserve those tax dollars. The next year when she would have a better understanding and then send her.
And, and, and just to, um, kinda go along with that is, uh, there's gonna be a lot more training opportunities throughout the year. There's gonna be training opportunities that are gonna be specific to, uh, the admin clerk. There's gonna be training activities that are gonna be specific to. Uh, finance officers, deputy clerks.
I'm in favor of training, but I, I think we gotta be smart in, in spending those training dollars.
So just change the motion to authorize the city clerk treasurer to attend?
Uh, yeah, that's the council's wish, yes. Well, I was just gonna say, when you, when you said that, that's exactly what I was thinking. How can we find some sort of compromise so that. She can get some training, but maybe not this one, based on what you read and, you know. I know, and, uh, our admin clerk, uh, participated in training, uh, maybe a month ago. Uh, I mean, we're, we're, we're pretty proactive about it and, uh, we, we will take every opportunity to get as much as we can. Even, I mean, it, it's anticlimactic, but maybe just effective, some online training, so you don't have to, like, leave. Uh, yeah, League of Minnesota Cities and, uh, M C O F A also send out training courses that are free, uh, typically, uh. You, you don't get this type of thing where you can sit and meet people and, you know, you, you miss that. That's the loss. But as far as the nuts and bolts of the training, you can do that via the. And, and to speak to that as well, Sourcewell, uh, at, at least once a month, sometimes twice a month, uh, will have activities and, you know, you saw my Friday report. Uh, I went to a, a clerk treasurer's network. Um, I mean, it's, it, they, they come up frequently. So you do. Get a lot of opportunity to make those connections.
And those networks are good, cause that gives you the opportunity to pick up the phone and call another clerk and say, how do you guys do it?
I know, realistically, I'm reaching out to another city at least once a week.
You've answered, so.
I'm in consensus. I mean, if. If, if the. And I would like to see Kelly go, but, uh, obviously at the same time, it's, she's too new, it kind of new into the. Understanding the, I mean, obviously she knows finance. But just how the city operates or how a city operates, I'd say let, hold off on sending her right now.
Oh, I'm proactive too. I'm an advocate of educating your staff, you know, and every, each and every. Uh, I'm proactive too. I'm an advocate of educating your staff, you know, and each and every opportunity, but it has to be so specific. You know, we've talked about Diane, I mean, she's in the trenches every day with you and like you say, you could do a lot of collaboration. Maybe it's not specific to her job title, but I think there'd be some value in her being part of that. And then you guys could team up and collaborate, but I know there's budgets and we budgeted what, five thousand?
I wanna be careful on how we spend it, get the best bang for the buck. I hate to, I mean, we're, we're gonna get out of about eleven hundred if just here you go.
Uh, yeah, tops and, uh, that, that would probably increase a little bit as well. I, I don't.
Cost is six hundred and forty dollars.
You got motel rooms and whatnot too.
That's a week, five days.
It is, it is five.
But I mean, you just have to look at the big picture, long term, you know, if, uh, we want staff that's, when you say cross trained, I know you're, you're, you're the boss, you're, you're running your ship, but your subordinates, uh, bring a lot to the table too, right?
Absolutely.
And so that being said, you know, limited dollars definitely play into it, but you know, I've been on, well, we were both on the school board, remember us training, we took and we, we were big advocates of it. And now in this setting here, I think it's important that your staff, you know, maybe you don't see value in it now, but at some point down the road, it might, uh, might be evidence.
I agree with you, Derwin, and, and I agree with what Brett is saying that, although in my own experience, when I ran banks, we were always cross-training people. So, so Joe, Jody knew what Billy's position did and Billy knew what Helen did and you had that inner knowledge and that, that really helped the organization. So, you know, I understand your line of thinking. Maybe it wouldn't be such a bad idea.
I would educate a disfor, I know it's, it's money always well spent to educate your staff, but only having three people on board in our administrative team, I, I would say you invest in your people. So down the road, you know, there's opportunities, uh, where you can collaborate and make I guess educated, informed decisions for the city.
I just, I wanna be real careful that people, we keep people in their lanes though too. But I mean, yes, we need to cross train. But I don't want people to get too far out of their job description, you know, into different things that they don't have to be in either. If they have to be there, the one thing, like when we had a part-time clerk and we were training, so that way they know a little bit. But I'm not for getting somebody a clerk's certificate if they're not gonna be our clerk. You know, that's, that's my take. That's what this works toward is a full clerk's certificate. So are we just educating somebody to go somewhere else? And take a higher paying job?
That's a risky always take.
You know, I mean, that's, and it's the taxpayers' dollars.
That's, I mean, that's true though, Jody, every time you educate someone, you make them more marketable and there's always at risk that they're gonna step, the next step up in their career, that's all. But there should be no reason to stop the training, cause the training, they get, is gonna benefit us.
Look what she's did with that TIF deal. I mean, you guys collaborated on that, but I think she was very.
Court's function and she worked a lot on that.
Well, she worked hand in hand with Brett.
That's what I'm saying. You, you had that collaboration.
I, I mean, there's just, I mean, in, in, in the TIF situation, there, there's so much information out there. A lot of times it, it can be a little vague. So, yeah, we put our heads together and we say like, hey, well, let's look at, you know, what, what Minnesota statutes say, okay, well, now let's read the TIF agreement, you know, where, where are we at? So, uh, there's, yeah, naturally there's gonna be collaboration, especially considering, you, you know, the, what the bills have to, you know, Diane handles the bills, right? So we have to look at that and so, you know, each of us take our skill set and put it together.
What, what does this leave us in our training budget if we go?
Yes, we, uh, we have expended some training, uh, earlier this year already.
I, you know, I, I understand where you come from, Jody, but I think with the small team we have, the better they're trained and the cross-trained, not to say she's gonna bounce out of her lane, but and I think Brett has already spoke to that you'd, you'd want her to get some more training, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, and it's, uh, and when it comes to, i- if they wanna step too far in their lane, uh, well, I'm, I will reorient, uh, the staff as necessary, I, I mean.
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that city clerk does their job, the deputy clerk does their job, and the administrative clerk does their job before their intake.
I think that is being demonstrated already, Jody, that Diane certainly does her job and she does it very, very well. And she seems to have a full grasp for what happens in that part of the city. And I think introducing her to and getting her acquainted with what, what goes on in Brett's office, that's only gonna help us. That's gonna help him, it's gonna help us. I, I, yeah, I think I see it as a, especially if he had to, if he's advocating for it too, you know?
So, but I, I guess I've heard a couple of different things, I mean, pros and cons, the benefits of the three admin that we have under the roof, right? And there's, so there's three names on the table. Obviously you're going, we want you to go and, and that's, that's a no-brainer. But now who's, who's your plus one? You know what I'm saying? Because there's been the, the, the pros and cons of, of, of both uh, in their job position. So I'm not trying to rewrite or re, reword the, the motion at all, but just in a dialogue sense, um, what carries more weight? One's more of been the title of the position, but early stage. And one is clearly, you know, cut her teeth and went beyond, you know, and doing things outside of the lane to keep this place spinning. And so I, I don't, I don't know, I'm just saying, there's all these pros and cons floating around, like who are we? Who are we gonna put on the, on the docket here, um?
Well, so.
Can we narrow it down?
It's Brett's, it's Brett's deal here in these lines. It's, the motion is to authorize city clerk treasurer and the admin, administrative clerk to attend the twenty twenty-five Minnesota Municipal Clerks and Finance Officers Association, Clerks Institute in Brooklyn Center, with related expenses for registration, lodging, and for them to be paid in the training budget.
And, and I'd like to modify that motion. And just add on to the training budget pursuant to city travel expense policy.
Is there any consideration in all three? Like if it's really.
Oh, we get to have someone to run the city hall, cause that's all we have, that's Monday through Friday, that they'd be shutting. Uh, I mean, on the very rare occasion where all three of us are out, that, that's not gonna be more than one day by itself. And, and I mean, typically in that situation, we're gonna know well.
And when you're gone that long, are you checking in daily at least a couple of times during the day if, see if there's any issues that come up?
I, I'm, I'm watching email twenty-four seven.
And you call and, and just talk to Kelly, anything you need to know?
We're, we're on a WhatsApp group together, uh, we, we communicate.
I felt bad, I sent the guy an email at six o'clock la, at night and he responded right away and I said, don't wait till Monday. He had a, he had a, he had a message right back to me, I'm like,
That was an easy one.
Yeah.
Just, just a question, just a question I'd like to ask. When, when you are attending these things and incurring, uh, your, your expenses for reimbursement to you, who's looking over your submission to approve it?
I, I mean, everybody to include the council.
Yeah, but when it goes in, it usually at the point it goes in gets looked at and somebody initials off approved. Who's doing that?
I, I mean, in this case, it would be Kelly.
So that's a whole different subject, we're off in the weeds.
I would make that motion with the amended, uh, wordage.
Need more discussion, I think we probably have enough. And we have the date change for the budget.
Can we, was there any op, opposition to going the week before, May, on May two? Is that next weekend, the, the sixteen? I'm out for that whole week, so.
One of the things I had thought was on the twenty-eighth, three of us are gonna be here already. What are the equals eight remaining from nine to ten? So I thought maybe we just do this at ten o'clock. Three of us are already here, so it's a matter of can you guys get here for that budget meeting instead of May ninth, could you get here on the twenty-eighth at ten o'clock?
Of April, or April?
Yeah, yes. It's a Monday.
Right, yeah, I can do that.
So it worked for you, Bill?
Some for some.
So the preliminary meeting, are we just gonna give preliminary numbers?
Yeah, preliminary numbers, that'll be with the department heads. That's why this one has to be during the day or one, during the day when everybody be able to be present. But running our preliminary numbers and we can start working on it too. I mean, I'd like to spend some time.
We're, we're gonna have it on the big screen this time, so as we go, we will make changes.
So that should give us a lot better use of time. Know your work, Bill?
April twenty-eighth at ten AM.
It works for you, Bill?
Yeah, right now, I'll have to move some things, but I, I think that's, cause the other, like, you're saying that it has to be during the day.
Yeah, for the department.
So it's just a matter of what day, you know?
Unless, unless Terry's pouring concrete that day.
Are we given a couple of hours for that meeting?
Yeah, it's eight times twelve. I, I don't wanna cut it short if we're making good progress, but I don't want it to go forever either.
Yeah.
As long as we're getting things accomplished.
My head starts spinning after too many numbers, so.
All right, so twenty eighth, uh, ten AM.
Uh, I have a resolution accepting donations for the Hooked on Fishing event. Whereas the city of Monaga gratefully acknowledges the following donations for the support of the Hooked on Fishing event. Five hundred dollars from the Lions Club, two hundred dollars from Community First Bank, Monaga. Whereas these contributions help support community engagement and recreational opportunities for youth and families in Monaga. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Monaga, Minnesota, that the donations described above are hereby accepted with sincere appreciation and will be used to support the Hooked on Fishing event. Adopted by the city council of the city of Monaga, Minnesota on this, the fourteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five.
You too, hopefully accept.
Second.
Next up.
Uh, council, uh, this is for the, uh, pay scale for the, uh, full-time campground building maintenance manager and public works technician pay scale. Uh, in here I included, uh, a bit of homework in how I arrived at the pay scale and you'll see the pay scale uh, on step two here. And, uh, pending, pending questions and discussion.
How, how does this pay scale, proposed pay scale compare to what other supervisors are getting?
It actually falls right in between, when I look at it, that's one of my questions, it falls right in between the liquor store manager and the public works manager on the pay scale. Dollar wise and that was my concern, I wanted to see where, where it stood with other managers and whatnot.
Just first question, why doesn't the city have all of the supervisors on the same pay scale? Um, just question. You, you've got some history, Derwin.
You know, this, everything was in place when I got on here, but, uh, I think each position has different, uh, job duties which require some maybe need more attention or there's more things going on.
Yeah, very, very few of them crossover.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, I'm not saying they crossover, but, you know, supervisors, I was wondering why supervisors aren't on one, one level. That's, that's your question.
I, at some point in the future, I, I think the goal is to do away with job position related to pay scale. Instead, go to just a grade and step.
But that would put all the supervisors on the same, same scale you're saying.
Not, not necessarily, you would just, you'd have step one through like step ten. And then each of those steps will have, or each of those grades would have then their, their fifteen steps.
He's taking away the, the title of the column instead, it would be a grade instead of this manager, that manager, this position, that position, and then just becomes strictly a grade and then stuff. Some of the cities already do that.
Yeah, there's some duties, I think there's more duties probably in public works and liquor store, for sure.
Or even, you know, with licensing, um, in credentials, you know, like, uh, education. Depending on what you qualify to, or specific.
Yeah.
You wanna be compensated accordingly, which makes it tough to put it on a blanketed.
With somebody who doesn't have to have that.
One could be a supervisor over a certain realm of the city.
That's a good point.
And it could be that they're supervising maybe up to five people versus one, I don't know, there's, just a moving target, I think.
The other question I had was related to uh, the union, is this, uh, gonna be under a, a union?
No, the city will own this.
From manager positions.
And then we talked a little bit about exempt and non-exempt. Is this gonna be exempt from overtime? Now you said you're gonna try to level it out, so and Jody, you pointed out, we do not wanna be paying overtime, but there's gonna be.
Yeah, it's either, either salary or it's hourly.
So we can manage the hourly thing and not end up with paying six hours overtime or something? I'm comfortable with that, then it, that's.
It's exempt or non-exempt?
Uh, it depends on what step. Uh, there is a certain threshold and I, I'm pretty sure it is, uh, twenty-eight thirteen, um, and that's, that isn't coincidence, this, or that is coincidence, um, but you have to make over a certain amount per hour to qualify to be as a salary position.
So this position would be exempt or non-exempt?
After, I believe, step four, it would be exempt.
Recommending what step on, on.
That, that comes up on another.
All right.
This, this is just to.
Just the pay scale.
Just to approve, authorize the full-time campground building management, public works technician pay scale to the city's place.
I'll make that motion.
For the favor, say hi.
Say, Henry one? Can we hear you? I thought you said something.
Let me second that.
Uh, right, uh, position offered to Mr. Brian Sukup. Uh, the personnel committee conducted an internal interview with Mr. Brian Sukup for the newly established full-time campground building maintenance manager and public works technician position. After thorough, a thorough review of qualifications and performance, the committee unanimously recommends that Mr. Sukup be offered the position. Personnel committee believes this internal promotion supports continuity, efficiency, and the city's commitment to recognizing the contributions of its employees.
And it is, I know he does a really big job for the city and is a good worker. And I know Ralph has nothing but the highest praise for Brian.
Well, the only thing that's missing on the motion is, Bill and I had suggested starting him at step four. He's on step four right now on public works.
Yes.
And step four would take him to exempt?
Exactly. That was our recommendations, recommendation to the council.
Just, just one quick question, Jody, when you interviewed him, did he have any, did he come up with any ideas to improve efficiencies or things that you could see outside of the box?
He's very good at being proactive and, and being on top of stuff and he's got some excellent ideas for, for getting that place to be. A lot of good ideas, which, well, some of them are gonna cost a little money, but they're gonna make, they're gonna make money over, he's gonna be looking at grants and whatnot doing.
Yeah, I was impressed, um, with not just the, the daily grind, but the, the trajectory of, of his vision for what it can be and sent us, and even followed up with some action points and like how to get there. So sometimes it's like, wow, we could do this and not really know how to get there, but he seemed to be really like the package deal, you know?
The guy loves his job, which.
He's always got, he's always.
Yeah, he's got some great ideas and I was like, wow.
Well, hey, unleash the beast.
I will make, I will make a motion that the city give the, uh, position to Brian Sukup, uh, and start him out on step four.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Do you, any more discretion? Was all those favors say, uh?
I.
Full sentence on thirty five zero. What, what Brian Malphius hired?
Yeah, yeah.
When does he start?
No. No, uh, tomorrow.
Yeah, can show up to work again.
Well, actually, it does make it nice to back that it's like spend on her, it's, you know, it's like it's so much easier. Which brings up the next one, then.
Uh, yes, uh, council, uh, in your packet here, you, uh, you have a council action request form to hire, uh, a, another dedicated public works employee. I have included the, uh, job description, this job description was approved in twenty three. Uh, you'll see the data on there, uh, and to my knowledge, uh, the union is also aware of this job description and I don't believe we can really, uh, deviate too far from that.
I have two amendments to make for the job description. Uh, top of page one and on, on page four, it's a city administrator, it should be city court treasurer.
I believe I am comfortable enough to make that without the union agreement. Yes, I will change the.
And, and on the signature page on page four as well. The city administrator should be city court treasurer.
Let's change that to city court treasurer.
But I, but I think if it's, was affected, was it?
Yeah, but for this, we have, that would just be. Just the title thing. All right, can I get a motion to add a fact?
Uh, one question, uh, for you, um. How would you intend to go about posting this?
Okay, so point of order before there's discussion, there's supposed to be a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
How would you go about posting, uh, this position, Brett?
Uh, I'm going to make some edits to the job description and change my title. And then I'm going to upload it to Hire Click, make sure everything looks appealing. And then, uh, hit send and then it will appear on Indeed, ZipRecruiter and, uh, a few of the other mediums. We're also gonna put it on our website.
You're gonna put it in the local paper?
Uh, I wasn't planning on it, but if this is the council's.
I think it should.
Yeah, local paper?
Just. Yeah.
Yeah, to find somebody local for it, is that?
Ideally.
And then in the newspaper, uh, maybe just a brief description of what they gotta do.
Yeah, I would just put the myself, I would just put that where I, the briefer we keep it, the less money it goes.
The city website, yeah, you can check out the website, description maybe?
Yeah.
Do we have an application form on the website they can fill out by one people website?
Yes, yes, we do.
Can they fill online or is that print and fill out?
No, no, you can, you can download the PDF and you can fill it out, you don't need to hand jam it.
So they can download, fill it out, hit send and it comes back to you?
Yes, it certainly does.
And they can attach resumes or?
And cover letters, yes, yes.
Any more discussion? All right, we have motion by Mike, second by Keith. All those favors say, uh?
Right.
Full sentence on. What should I do? Well, I'm, we're on me. This is, you know, the law, this is just public work.
Yes, yes.
They're still up to grass over a little bit of them.
Uh, council, so I know that we talked about the feasibility of having a, uh, swim instructor. Uh, well, I, uh, had someone reach out to me who was very interested in the position and, uh, I had a little bit of back and forth. And, uh, i- if the council would like, uh, I think someone would, uh, apply for this position. And it'd be a pretty good fill, uh, we kinda discussed and, uh, it's a, it's kinda reflected in the job description as well. Um, it would be, uh, between nine and twelve hours a week, uh, be about three days a week, so three hours a pop, um. And, uh, they would be teaching swimming lessons at Spirit Lake.
Be awesome.
It'd be fabulous. Yep, and a couple of questions for you, Brett, under the salary, just, just as an idea, under the salary, could we do a minimum salary of this or say, pick a percentage, say eighty percent of the fees? Whichever is greater, could we, could we do that?
I got.
It's kind of messy.
It'd be a little bit, you know.
That is almost like they're self-employed.
Question, question.
I don't know, yeah.
This makes it messy, I mean, I've never seen one. Never seen one posted where you get a percentage for a city job with all the.
So it's kinda. The, the, the idea is, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna pay them somewhere between, uh, seventeen, twenty-five, twenty dollars an hour. We, we discussed, uh, a little bit and this will come to the council formally. Um, uh, the fee that we would charge, uh, is tentatively twenty-five dollars a person and that's your season pass. Um, and that price is a little lower than Park Rapids and it's middle of the, uh, middle of the road. Uh, and then the city would just take that fee and put it into, uh, beach revenues.
And I understand we would open it up to Sadiq if they wanted to bus kids over for swimming lessons?
Well, I mean, this would kinda have to be on the instructor and, uh, the, uh, yeah, this would kinda have to be a discussion with the instructor to see how much bandwidth, um.
You know, this.
Well, they can handle.
Yeah, and, cause there's kind of, there's.
There's only so many slots.
Yeah. And I'm looking at the, the safety aspect of it, i- if you have too many people, then that span of control really starts to contract and, uh, I just, you know, I wouldn't want to see the initiative get stopped by.
If I remember, it was Brandon Hill, I'm not, I'm not calling you guys old or anything. Well, when I did swimming lessons here in town, back in, I don't know when it was, I think it was in mid nineties. Um, it wa- I, I, if I remember, there, like, there was like ten kids that would, ten kids, and it was ten kids, it likes swim lesson one and then a week later it was swim class two and there was ten kids per class, I think that's what it was.
Different day.
Yeah, it wa- well, they, they would do like June one through seven and then it was, you know, the, it was the ninth, ninth through whatever, it was like a one week or whatever it was. It was every day for a couple hours, but it was one week, you know.
Well, what they can do is have.
Well, that would, that would be part of the job would be for them to develop.
Yeah.
What kind of program works, depending on how many bits they get, they would have to have some, some openness and some options.
They can have more than one.
Yeah, yeah, they always did, like, I think they did.
Classes, I'm saying.
Yeah, two classes a day or whatever it was.
I would, you know, I would, this candidate, um, you know, talk to their, talk to them and, uh, I would like to, or if we can, to see what have been done in the past. You know, what has been their, their limit, is it a, a three session series, you know, we meet three times and you're, you're, you're done, on to the next group? Is it more, and if, and if they really haven't, but had like that vast of a, where they're seeing multiple kids all summer type of a thing, then I would encourage them to dialogue with, say, how Park Rapids does it?
And just say, let's get.
Cause they're pretty well seasoned.
First we go beside the corner of the house and.
Yeah.
Have they taught swimming lessons before?
No, not that I'm aware of, uh, they are due to get their, uh, water safety instructor certification of.
Oh, they're in the process.
Okay, sure.
Well, I make.
In your job description, you list must be at least fifteen and I ju- I, just a question, is, is that too young?
In order to be a lifeguard in Minnesota, you have to be, uh, fifteen years or older.
This is for the swimming instructor.
And I, I think that's fine, if you pass the certification, yeah. If you're, you're certified and you, uh, you show the motivation, willingness to do it, I'll give you a shot.
Okay, just a question.
But I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
The motion.
Good, uh, on this, on, on to you, just have to change on the back, signature page to click.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a holdover from.
Hold the favor say, uh?
Hi.
Full sentence on. There's got you.
Well, that's great. That'll be fun.
Yeah, that'd be, I think, that'd be a lot.
No, we haven't, uh, I reached out to the high school and, uh, just said like, hey.
So we may have a swimming instructor, but no longer, violation to this week, might be making support.
Might come, there might be some college kids coming on, but, you know, who knows?
All right, well, I think to the department. Some of these you just went over, but kind of the last meeting, I don't know if there was any, anything that stands up for anybody on the police. Didn't pull up one, I was here that day.
That was.
She came in and she left wet footprints down the hall and she was cold.
It was a good time. That's right.
Sure, but I knew belly flops.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they put a sun out there for him? So they put a sun out?
That's, that's, that was a cold.
Straight out of the hydrant, so.
That does remind, police community meeting in the fourth.
Going in again next year's.
Yeah, they, she said they raised like fourteen thousand dollars for special ed.
Wow.
It was big, I mean, it was a.
Ah, she's a good girl. We have a liquor store report.
Also year-to-date topic.
Yeah, I've noticed that too. It's looking good.
We're meeting on the eighteenth?
Yes, yeah. Uh, three P M.
I was looking at this, I wonder why the jukebox showed a fifty dollar loss, it's unusual, I would think. The other thing I, I saw in here, I wonder if Heather needs to increase the credit card fees. Cause when I, I, when I compared the credit card fees collected against the credit card fee expenses on the, uh, expense report for the city, for the first quarter of the year, the city has lost, I guess I put that back here. It was, it was, uh, like thirteen hundred dollars for the first quarter.
Why not extend because they're charging the fee to use it?
Yeah.
It's not good. Take a look at what our expenses are for credit card fee versus credit card fee surcharge income. And the city is, is still losing money, so I wonder if, if they need to, uh, increase. There it is, page thirty-three.
Did you compare the off-sale and on-sale?
Yes. The off-sale had a loss uh, of three hundred thirty, uh, uh, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and five cents. On sale had a loss of nine dollars seventy-nine cents for a total of three hundred forty-four dollars eighty-four cents for the first quarter. You annualize that and that's a projected loss of one thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
I wonder if the user fee is higher than we're charging.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you need to look at that and if so, you need to increase that fee.
Something you can bring up to other.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then.
Yeah, I, um, inquire about that as well.
It was a good time, Mike.
Yeah, it was good, good.
You know, public works, we're gonna have anything, we had that report on the thirty-first.
Yeah, I, I talked around today, uh, no- nothing significant to report to the council.
Everybody got that email, Mr. Allen's in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is one of the roads that's on that project, if we, if that project going, that's a road that's gonna be replaced. And I wa- I had walked by that and seen that, it's like, they had to have the wing down for the heavy snow and it caught that corner and that pavement is in such bad shape.
Oh, yeah, it was crumbling, it, it, yeah, but, yeah. It's been crumbling like that for years and I'm surprised it lasted.
It wasn't something that was done on purpose.
When is that road due to be redone?
That's, it's part of that project we have from going in front of a lake and right in front of here that goes across.
So it depends if we're approved.
Well, yeah, and I don't. Nothing sounds good as far as getting any kind of dollars for that. It's, there's money for water, there's no money for sewer. So that's something we gotta look at in, in committee, there might come a time here where we're gonna have to bite the bullet. Look at what do we take to, to move it forward, cause everybody knows the longer you wait, cost just goes up awesome, so we'll, we'll have to do some, we'll have to do some looking at that in committee. And we're agreeing with connections, Laura's out of state, if she would have been here tonight. What do they look?
Yeah, they might, they might speak to themselves.
Pretty straightforward, she had, she had sent me something about something on the building thing, I told her I wasn't in touch with you cause you're on that board, but then she said, uh, it was not.
I know she's probably working with I C F right now, so.
Has she, has she scheduled a tour of the intended building site yet?
We'll be spilling away.
Yeah, it's working on us, so you're, she's gonna invite the council, I mean, the whole house will be part of that, so.
It'd be nice to see where this would go.
I've seen, uh, preliminary, it's gonna kinda go back to that property that was gonna go east of the existing, existing living there. But yeah, I think she, her intention is just to invite the whole council.
Would that, would that take in, with the, with the projected addition, uh, footprint take in where that garage is?
Yep, it goes back towards that garage.
It would take in that garage.
It'd take in the garage itself completely, but it would be.
Gonna keep it connected, I would imagine, so that would just goes off at an angle. So they can, they're all in the same hallway, they can provide the services they need to provide.
Yeah, I read where she'd like to have, you know, the artist sketch of the proposed addition done for the, for the sixtieth.
Yeah, that's, is that that eighty-five hundred or the I C F?
That's all in, that's all in August.
The only thing that scares me is, you know, you know, everybody else costs your up, but they threw you like preliminary numbers of three to four hundred dollars square foot.
A month?
I don't value.
Three to four hundred dollars.
Square?
Square foot, negative, goes all the way from stick frame would be in the three hundreds and the upper three hundreds would be if you go steel, so.
Oh, that's not surprising considering residential's going further, two hundred, you know, two twenty for residential. Finished.
So I don't know, we'll see, see where it ends up. But you don't know until you do this.
All right, so we had nothing from the fire department.
We got that from Laura's.
Uh, yeah, I guess we do need to approve the report.
I'll make a motion to, to, to mark the financial report.
When you second, ready? Hold the favor say, uh, uh, I, hold the favor sign. Motion thirty-five zero. Then, um, year-to-date, but it's, it's look better than last one.
Yes.
Corrective.
Yes, uh.
I won't screw it and, and there are several accounts, well, you can see I marked pages, where the city is in excess of fifty percent year-to-date on expenses for, for that plan. One that I think is, is gonna have the biggest impact is, is on the, uh, health, health insurance. Health insurance was running quite a bit ahead of, of the budget. I remember I over, let me find it here.
Which page?
I gotta find it. Wouldn't you know, I should have put a big, here I am, something on it. Well, I, okay, I looked like on page seven. Now, that could be due to the allocation of how that's done. For the street department, it's showing fifty-five point two nine percent of budget for employer-paid health. And seventy-eight point eight three percent for employer-paid life. Uh, but the the salaries was only eleven point nine seven percent of budget. So something just didn't look right to me here.
Oh, that's I had questioned last month if some stuff is front-loaded or if everything is just on a monthly, monthly day.
Well, uh, salaries would be monthly. Employer health, employer life. Uh, that would all be monthly. And as I went through it, I, I, I saw that in other departments as well where the health was quite a bit ahead. And you know, our budget is set for the year. We can't say what, we can't do an looks. We gotta increase our, our, our levy. But it would be nice to have a projection that if in fact we are running that far ahead of, of the life and the health premium cost, how much over budget will that put us for the year in terms of dollars?
Well, another.
So that we know as, as we're looking at other things that's saying, well, we gotta do this, we gotta.
Another thing you gotta remember for street, water, sewer.
I know they allocate.
We're splitting and right now at this time of year where this has all been going on, they've been on streets much more than they've been on other stuff due to the plowing and the maintenance and whatnot. So that might be part of that.
But then you have, you should see a corresponding percentage on wages. Wages uh or salaries on streets is at eleven point nine seven percent.
So.
It should be close to the same allocation percentage of health and so forth. So something, something just didn't look right to me. And as I said, what, what uh what uh concerned me is that if in fact we are running ahead of the budget, it would be nice to know what the dollar projection in excess of what we budgeted will be. So as we do things throughout the year, we gotta keep that in mind that we're already over this amount of money, you know?
Do you think?
Just, just do a check on it. That's all I'm saying. Just do a, do a double check, Brett. In your office, not no, you know?
No, 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 let me uh.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're saying. And this kinda segues into another discussion we've had, uh. But uh this, I, we'll talk about it during the budget meeting and that like instead of um always accounting for everyone's hours, we want to do it by percentages now. It would just make budgeting and payroll a lot easier. Uh, discussion during the budget meeting.
There was on the professional services, uh page three there, that was the one that really caught my eye. It was a hundred and forty-five percent on professional services. We had five thousand that uh budgeted and we're at seventy-two hundred. I'm wondering if that isn't something that's not.
Yeah, so uh it, I don't have uh Bannon pulling up on this laptop right now, but I know that I did look that up and that was erroneous. So that will be a journal entry.
I had the same item earmarked, Jody, but I had another question to go with it, which is this, that where's that V F W uh donation for the transmission reflected? Shouldn't that be in account three, six, two, three, zero contributions and donations?
No, that was straight to the police.
Or it was, yeah, that, that is police department. I'm on page four, under police department. Under the revenues, the last five digits of the account, three, six, two, three, zero. And that is zero for year-to-date amount. So that, that that um V F W donation, I'm not seeing where it's reflected. And of course, you, because of how we, how we book everything, it does show a hundred and four, but if, if there, if it was booked as a contra expense where it lowered the expense, it wouldn't be that higher percentage of over. But where's that V F W donation? It, it seems to me it should be in that three, six, two, three, zero.
I, I concur, yeah.
Am I, you see?
No, no, that, that, that makes entirely too much sense. And I, I can, I guarantee it got placed somewhere else. Um, I, I, we, we have been having just a little bit of um, I'm not calling them issues, but I'll call them just uh growing pains, if you will.
Learning curve.
Issues. Yeah, learning curve where um where some things I look at, I would intuitively want to put them there. Uh, they were placed elsewhere. Uh, those are being corrected and addressed as they come up. So this one will be identified, addressed and a journal entry will be made.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got actually two donations, um.
Sourcewell?
Yeah, Sourcewell.
Well, that's right. So also we have two.
Yeah, those are both in.
I had another question, just, just an educating question. On page eight for city park, under the expenses, we have uh expense of internet. Is, is that for, is that a hotspot?
Oh, yeah, they got Wi-Fi out there.
For the city park? Why, why do we leave that on? Can't we turn that on and off so we're not paying for it in the off-season?
Probably have a connected discount for you.
Yeah. I, I, I've never asked the question, Mike, but I understand.
Spent a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and say we shut it off in October. That's gonna be, say, another hundred and sixty-seven. That's gonna be three hundred and thirty-dollar savings to the city.
I believe it's the camera. Our security camera.
Oh, is that the security camera?
Everything.
Oh.
So you don't wanna suspend that service. I, I mean, I, I, whatever, not the council is, I'll, I'm gonna look at it first before uh I say anything, but yeah, uh, I will look into it.
Okay, I never thought of that. I just thought of hotspot. Water utilities. Admin salaries are at zero. Wouldn't some of Diane's time have been allocated to water? Same for sewer?
I would say yes.
Yeah, last year, the way it ended up, I think it was almost the end of the year before they pulled those funds, cause the funds are funds are sitting there. We allocate X amount of dollars to admin. And then they pulled it up. It was late in the year last year, I think, when we pulled it over.
It didn't get clocked last year?
No, they just did, we didn't pull it over until then. The funds are, the funds are sitting there. They just didn't get pulled in.
So they're going uh on the economy side, the way you said in here, just make one.
It worked out easier for them last year instead of, otherwise they're gonna pull thirty-three dollars this month and, you know, splitting it all over the place. And it was just the way it was done last year. That's all they did. I remember I brought it up and I heard this money's still sitting here. And then this fund shows that we're like in the hole over here. It's got swapped over.
So they did, I mean, averaging, just as an example, said, well, twenty-five percent for time was just or twelve and a half percent of her time was to speed, twelve and a half percent to water. So twenty-five percent was moved over and split and the health insurance moved over and split. Is that what you're saying? Adjusting, adjusting entries were done?
Last year, I believe what they did is we uh pulled all of it over, cause there was a certain amount set aside in sp- in streets, water and sewer for admin. We pulled it all over. And our, our budget was incorrect on what's correct on admin, but the way it was showing on here, we were going in the hole on the admin part. But all that money was sitting there, so they pulled it all over, cause it was allocated for admin.
Yeah. Well, I just looked here and I, I see we had like, like in the, in the water, we have fifteen thousand allocated for the year for admin salaries and zero dollars actual. Same thing on sewer.
Hmm.
Yeah, we budgeted it. We just haven't pulled any over yet. Is what it amounts.
Well, it's newer, trying to uh even.
And it should be the same way on streets, I would imagine.
Uh, and liquor store.
And liquor stores.
All this.
If you wanna see if you wanna see the, the uh credit card for the liquor store, it's gonna be on page thirty-two and thirty-three. You wanna mark that for yourself, Brett?
Thirty-two and thirty.
Pages thirty-two and, and thirty-three, yeah.
Yes.
Credit card surcharges, three, seven, eight, two, zero for the off-sale. Um and thirty-four also. Thirty-four is gonna, we'll find the answer. How comes our DRAM insurance is already at seventy-two percent?
Well, well, didn't.
I mean, we pay that when? In January or? Well, that's, we paid nineteen forty-one. So did, did, the, the premium go down from what was budgeted? That was my question I wanted to ask you.
And.
Cause that's usually an annual premium you pay usually. And it's nineteen hundred and forty-one dollar year-to-date amount. Twenty-seven hundred budgeted. So did we over-budget on that?
Entirely possible. Uh, which page are you looking at, Mike?
That, uh, that's on page thirty-three, Brett.
Thank you.
Uh, last three digits are three, six, four. DRAM insurance.
It's entirely possible we over-budgeted on that, but I I would have to get on Bannon and drill it down.
Be interesting to know what the premium was in twenty-four. Did our premium go down?
As I, I definitely know on a majority of the insurances during the budgeting process, uh, I, I kept those pretty much the same, if not higher. So I'd be very interested in look. I'm gonna write this line down and.
Be interesting to know what it was in twenty-four to compare to what we paid in twenty-five.
Other than that, do you know?
I would guess that's caps and T-shirts. Do they sell caps and T-shirts at the liquor store?
Does, does that, that say like the Monaga?
Cause you got the same issue on page thirty-five, Brett. Uh, the last three digits are three, six, four. That's your on-sale. Uh, page thirty-three was your off-sale. And the, and the, the amount the amount that we paid on each one is exactly the same, nineteen hundred and forty-one dollars to off-sale, nineteen forty-one to on-sale. But the budgeted amounts are different by two hundred dollars between them.
Well, that, there are, there is some different insurance we carry just on off-sale for our cannabis products now. That's a separate that we want to have on the on-sale side because we don't sell it on the on-sale side.
Well, tha- tha- that's true, uh, but still I'm, I'm interested to know if our insurance went down that much or just what happened. And it'll also be interesting to know was, has the question ever been asked our insurer? If selling the THC is gonna have an impact on?
Yeah, it was. How much was it?
Has that, has that been asked?
Paid the extra fee.
Yes.
Thirty-four dollars for it?
Yes.
It was dirty, like, it was gonna be like a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and fifteen. And when Kelly actually went to put it on there, they said, oh, there's a sale on that this month or whatever. And we got it for thirty-four or thirty-seven dollars.
That's not the year. For the year, yeah. So an increase of thirty-four.
So they put a rider on for thirty-four dollars?
It's such a common thing now. There's less problems with that than there is without. How long was?
I don't know. Yeah, that was, that was basically all the questions I had on the, on the budget that I highlighted.
Just seventy-nine thousand. Uh, but also, uh, I asked the consul, when you're looking at these, if you do see something, just please email me the uh the line number and we can look at it because we, we definitely identified some, some pretty interesting places where uh expenditure went and we need to move it. So uh, a good.
As a courtesy, like us to let you know, cut it to the meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, and just so that we can be more efficient as well.
That's all I have. A lot of these questions answered. Really. We're not all fit in here. We don't have to be. We have some bills.
Uh.
Students of character?
No.
That's through the school.
That's an annual event. That's an annual event that is put on by Sourcewell, held at Madden's Resort on Gold Lake. And I gone through it two years. And these are the kids that are being honored this year from various school districts. Monaga has Isabel Apple and a Sylvia Hill that are being honored. And they have some pretty amazing stories to tell. It's really, it's really a good event. And you, uh, usually the city will register a couple people, go over to it. I'll go again. You wanna go, Bill?
Sure, yeah, I've been to it a few times.
You like it?
We, Mrs. Hodg and I, we've uh recommended students.
Yeah, you have?
We've nominated them. Yeah, and so if the student that you nominate gets selected, then the, the now, then you get to go and.
Goes up there.
Celebrates that with the. Was in the war. And there a couple of times years back, I don't know.
You want, you wanna go together, Bill? You wanna go?
Sure, I mean, if there's.
It's April twenty-third.
It's really.
Can you register as Illinois for that with Sourcewell?
Yeah.
It's uh Students of Character is, is the event.
Is there a cost involved? I am not sure. I, this is the first I'm hearing of this.
So when we.
I don't, I don't know. The city, the city sent Liz and I the last two years.
You gotta wanna go, that's good.
Chances are, once again, whoever nominated Isabel and Sylvia as the educators.
And I know, I know the superintendent from the Naga usually goes every year. He's there from the school.
Kind of the.
School is, is what it's, it's really, it's, it's great. You really, you really gotta respect those kids and, and some of the obstacles they overcome.
Yeah.
Brett, did we have to do anything with the?
Oh, so those are, were his, this will be for Brett's evaluation. Um, we, at the next meeting, so I need to get him back at least a week before the next meeting. So I can bound his evaluation. And then we'll have a closed session, so whether you want, we'll have a.
It'll be closed. I just wanted to know what it was.
Full source, sorry.
Well, that's.
Did he get back to?
Uh, he did not. Go back to now.
And they usually get them. Well, you've been there.
Yeah.
So we've got the bills to who. There wasn't a month in there. There wasn't an action that we told Bill. Okay. I didn't check, man.
I have one.
Never been like a month. Wish I missed it somewhere. No, I don't see it.
You had the.
Yeah, I got.
What's that? Well, you know, both of us on the bills.
What do you make some?
I, I get it. Yeah, you, you sure? Check this public patent.
Yeah, I didn't, I went straight to the budget. No, there was nothing. Oh, there it is. My mind.
Your mind.
It was buried.
Brett, Jody found his.
Yeah. And he came a couple of the budgets. There it is. Those got it. Mine was buried in between a couple other pages. I don't know.
No.
We've got two batches, total sixty one, zero, eleven, twenty one. Motion media crew batch, zero, four, one, five, two, five, pay for twenty seven thousand, six, oh, five, twenty one cents. And batch, zero, four, one, five, two, five, E F T for thirty three thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Per total of sixty one thousand, eleven dollars and twenty one cents.
Second.
Little favor say, ah.
Second. And the tide is seven thirty. Who's the motion second?
To adjourned, Mike and myself.
Uh, thank you viewers for attending, uh, we are going to end the screen, have a good night.
Oh, seven, one, five.